All right. Thank you, everybody in the audience. I really appreciate you guys being patient with me. I apologize for being a few minutes late here today. I would like to start with, you know, those that, you know, in the audience, not in the audience, but those that are at home. You know, you can always join the meeting at, you know, if you're having trouble online by calling into 469-708-0487. The meeting ID tonight is 606-887-463-POUND. And I'd like to start the Town Council Workshop Tuesday, July 1st at 5:39 with a quick roll call. To my left, Councillor Klinger.
Present.
Councillor Gass.
Present.
Councillor Farrington.
Present.
And Councillor Palangi.
Present.
And myself, Michael Johnson, Chair and President as well. Tonight, we are going to be talking at the workshop about the revised budget. Mike has spent some time redoing the budget. He's got a lot of great suggestions on where we can save some money in various areas. And, you know, we are always looking to improve, you know, not only saving the taxpayers' money, but making sure that we are also making sure that we don't make too many deep cuts into services and affecting our staff as well. So if the Town Manager would like to start by going over the budget, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mike, for helping.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some brief remarks and then a short slideshow where I'll go over some numbers in more detail, and then we'll open it up to the council for questions and guidance. But Honorable Town Councillors, it's my pleasure to present a revised budget proposed for fiscal year 2026 for your review and consideration following the referendum town meeting where Articles 3, 4, 6, and 14 were not approved by the voters. In accordance with the Town Charter, we are obligated to convene a special, open-floor town meeting to address the failed articles as recommended by the Town Council. The recent outcomes of the vote, including the failure of several budget warrant articles and the school budget validation referendum, have been noted. We acknowledge and understand our voters' desire to reduce the budget and ultimately lower taxes. However, it is important to clarify that these reductions are confined to the municipal budget as determined by the articles that did not pass. The School Department follows a separate process that the Superintendent has recently outlined for the School Board. As a dedicated member of our staff and supported by an incredible team, I would like to assure you that we are committed to collaborating with the new Town Council and, most importantly, with all community members on a revised budget. Your input and collaboration are essential as we navigate this process. Together, we will develop a revised budget that meets the expectation and needs of our residents. Our objective is to present a balanced and acceptable budget for your consideration, and we remain optimistic about achieving this goal. I'm pleased to report that the proposed revised municipal budget is $676,000 less than the budget approved by the previous Town Council. Additionally, this budget is approximately $491,000 less than our current budget for fiscal year '25. The revised budget includes only one new position for an additional law enforcement officer, which will commence halfway through the fiscal year as approved by the voters in Article 5. Following guidance from the new Town Council, the budget eliminates the establishment of a wage scale and market adjustments, opting instead for a simple cost-of-living adjustment, also referred to as a COLA, of 3%, consistent with past practices, with the exception of our full-time firefighters, who are subject to a collective bargaining agreement. This adjustment is proposed to be effective in September. In addition to those significant revisions to the budget, there are a few other changes I will outline. The Town is reconsidering joining the main PERS or Main Public Employees Retirement System, regular Plan AC for non-firefighters, based on guidance from the new Town Council. This proposal pauses our efforts to join this plan, and a formal vote on this matter is scheduled for the Town Council meeting immediately following this workshop. This decision is expected to result in estimated annual savings of $4,000 based on our initial forecast of employee participation in that new program. We will be extending the working hours for Town Office staff from 36 to 40 hours. This adjustment is intended to better align with our workforce, better align our workforce with the needs of the Town and to ensure that we continue to deliver a high level of service expected by our community. As part of this initiative, we will reinstate Friday office hours from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This change aims to enhance accessibility and convenience for our residents. We appreciate your cooperation in implementing this adjustment. These modifications have been proposed at the request of the new Town Council and are set to commence in September, with further details to be provided following budget approval. This adjustment entails some additional costs, which have been incorporated into this revised budget. This budget reflects a reduction of $200,000 in annual paving expenses due to more favorable pricing recently received and remaining funds in our paving reserve. This adjustment will enable us to proceed with the planned road paving projects. However, it will be necessary to reassess this allocation in future budgets should there be any changes to pricing. We are pleased to present a budget that incorporates the outlined changes, along with other minor adjustments made by various departments. This budget ensures that there will be no loss of jobs, reductions in employee benefits, or significant service cutbacks. However, any additional reductions to the budget would necessitate sacrifices in those areas. While the Town's primary revenue sources were more adequately, accurately reflected in fiscal year '25, they have begun to stabilize in fiscal year '26, resulting in a modest decrease compared to current year's revenue levels. The most substantial reductions have been in recreation fees as we continue to transition from an enterprise fund. Following one full fiscal year and part of the upcoming fiscal year, we will be able to produce more accurate budget figures in this area. Some challenges we have encountered include slight reductions in participation and the split of fees with New Gloucester. To further support a balanced municipal budget and as approved by voters, the use of fund balance also continues, but has been reduced by approximately $250,000, resulting in a total of $750,000. We intend to continue reducing this amount in the future. To further support a balanced municipal budget, we initially proposed borrowing to refinance higher interests, long-term debt, and fund current capital needs at more favorable financing rates and terms. However, this proposal has been removed from the revised budget based on guidance from the new Town Council, resulting in an increase in the originally proposed debt service budget. Additionally, the allocation of additional funds to the Capital Reserve of $1 million, which was approved by voters, borrowing will no longer be necessary. Consequently, addressing the failure of Article 14 is not required. The revisions outlined to date primarily focus on addressing the shortcomings of Article 3. Article 4 pertains to the appropriation of Town Council stipends. And in the absence of any specific directives regarding this matter, those funds will remain as initially proposed. Finally, we must address Article 6. This article authorizes the use of tax increment financing, or referred to as TIF funds, from the Town's previously established TIF districts to support our Economic Development Department. These funds are not derived from general taxpayer contributions and are restricted for use in specific projects and activities as part of those programs. These funds cannot be utilized to balance the budget. However, eligible items previously included in the regular budget can be allocated here, thereby reducing the overall need for tax revenue. This includes the salary and benefits of the Economic Development Director and portions of the salaries for the Town Manager and the Communications and IT Director. The Economic Development Budget was initially reduced as part of our original budget proposal and has been further reduced through these revisions. The work undertaken will support economic development within the community, contributing to the creation of a more sustainable and long-term tax base. Overall, municipal expenditures have reduced by 3.7%, approximately $491,000, compared to the current fiscal year budget, while total municipal revenues have decreased by 1.7%, approximately $123,000. This results in an approximate 10.5% or $672,003 net decrease in the required property tax needs to finance the municipal portion of the budget. Given Gray's current assessed valuation of approximately $2.2 billion, this translates into a significant reduction in the municipal portion of the property tax rate by 33 cents, representing an 11.2% decrease from the current year's rate. The newly proposed tax rate reduction exceeds the previously approved budget by more than double, which will lead to an average decrease of approximately $157 in taxes for the average homeowner to support the municipal portion of the budget. In reference to the school budget, the school portion of the budget currently remains undefined and is being presented to the MSAD-15 School Board. Upon adoption of a revised budget, a joint town meeting is scheduled for July 24th. We expect to obtain more comprehensive data about the school budget following this meeting. The budget process concludes with a school budget validation referendum currently slated for August 26th. Given that the municipal government does not have jurisdiction over the school budget, we strongly encourage community members to engage actively in the school district's budgetary proceedings. Community involvement is crucial to ensuring that the budget reflects the needs and priorities of our residents. The fiscal year '26 budget includes a 6.13% increase amounting to $59,862 in the Town's Cumberland County Tax Bill. This rise encompasses the additional payment due to the fiscal year shift, which we're in year three of five, and additionally increases in wages and benefits and inflation as key sectors as utilities and standard goods contribute to this increment, as stated by the county management during a Town Council workshop recently on March 18th. In summary, we recognize that residents and businesses may find it difficult to sustain substantial increases in the property tax rate annually, especially those adversely affected by revaluation. Again, we fully understand our voters' desire to reduce the budget and ultimately lower taxes. It is our sincere hope that this year's revised budget and significant tax reduction are seen as positive developments for the community. Further reductions, however, would result in job losses, decreased employee benefits, or service reductions. We greatly appreciate your support and trust in our ability to effectively balance the community's financial obligations with its available resources. Town Council workshops related to the revised budget review are starting this evening. Following the presentation, time will be provided for the new Town Council and the public to consider the revised budget. It's recommended that we could hold potentially subsequent workshops on July 22nd or further dates, or a special Town Council meeting to conduct a public hearing and vote on draft revised warrant articles. This would facilitate scheduling an open-floor special town meeting on either July 22nd, July 29th, or August 12th. And workshops and Town Council meetings will take place here in the Town Council chambers at the Henry Pendle Municipal Complex as planned, and the open-floor special town meeting is intended to be held at the Gray-New Gloucester High School, as have been done in the past. Any additional delay in the approval of the budget will adversely affect the Town's cash flow and investment strategies. The public is cordially invited to attend these workshops in person, view them online, or participate remotely via Microsoft Teams. This will provide ample opportunity for residents and businesses to gain insights into the budget review process. We look forward to collaborating with the new Town Council members, the School Department, and our esteemed residents and businesses to present a well-balanced revised budget proposal that serves the community's best interests and helps us move forward. I'll now go over a handful of slides that have some more details about the numbers that I talked about.
Mike, I just want to make a comment to everyone out here and everyone in public. This is all online, that you guys can look at all the information that Mike and his team have prepared. And if you just go to the Town of Gray website, go to, I think it's the
Government.
Tab, and then
Budget.
Then Budget, and it has all this information out there, broken down. Are you going over?
And all the old information is there, too.
All right, all right. So this information is out there for you to review. Mike's not going to hit all of it, I don't think, tonight, but most of it is there. And, you know, you're welcome to, you know, to address any questions if you're not available to tonight. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So I just want to recap the articles that were rejected. So Article 3, which is essentially the main budget, includes the various departmental breakdowns of the budget, and that was rejected by the voters. Article 4, which is the Town Council Compensation, was also rejected by the voters. Article 6, which is the transfer of TIF funds to support our Economic Development Department, as I described in my introduction, and then Article 14 was the proposed borrowing. So just to go over some revised budget highlights again, we reduced spending by a total of $676,000 from the previously proposed budget. That's a reduction of $491,000 from fiscal year '25. It eliminates a proposed wage scale and market adjustments, as I outlined in my message, and replaced that with a 3% cost-of-living adjustment effective on 9/1/25. It eliminated the Main Public Employees Retirement System, increases Town Office working hours to 40, and restores Friday hours from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It reduces annual paving by $200,000 due to favorable pricing, removes borrowing for refinance and capital needs, and reduces the Economic Development Budget and transfer from TIFs for that purpose. Just to go over some more specific items within each department, Administration, the total reductions was $539,634, which is revised wages, taxes, and benefits, and some other small items that we're able to adjust, $1,000 here, a couple thousand dollars here. Library and Recreation, we were able to reduce $26,348, which includes revised wages. In Public Safety, we were able to reduce by $60,000, which includes revised wages and some other ancillary items. In Public Works, we were able to reduce by $356,000, which includes revised wages and paving and some other ancillary items. And then there's no change to the Capital Fund, because we had gotten to a point where we proposed the use of existing reserve funds, and then now we have the new funding to the Capital Reserve. And then we adjusted revenue by $279,094, and we revised figures based on adjusted forecasts for the upcoming fiscal year. So the final budget is here for Administration, which includes Administration, Human Resources, Code Enforcement and Planning, Economic Development, Assessing, General Assistance, Communications and IT, and Elections, and that's a total of $4,213,000. Library and Recreation, which is a total of $912,000. Public Safety, which includes the Fire Department and Law Enforcement, that has a total budget of, actually I have a typo in there. I put the revised amount in there, so I apologize for that. I'll revisit the total. For Public Works, which includes Public Works, Recycling and Solid Waste, and Facilities and Parks, that's a total budget of $4,153,000. And Debt Service, we originally proposed a reduction in that, and that is now $1136,000, which maintains the debt structure as originally had planned. So the total budget, 33% of that includes the Administration, which includes all those items that I outlined earlier. 32% is Public Works, 19% is Public Safety, 9% is Debt Service, and 7% is Library and Recreation. And so with that, this is how we calculate proposed tax rate that I kind of outlined. As you can see, so the revised municipal, total municipal budget is $12,912,000, which is a reduction of about $491,000 or 3.7%. There's no change to the TIF, and there's no change to the school. I recorded in here what the school had proposed and was voted on by the voters, which reflected the 11% increase in Gray's share of the MSAD School District. The County budget, there's no change to what was proposed in there as well. So if there was no change to the school budget, which was originally presented, that would result in a total operating budget for both municipal school and county of $29,202,660, which represents a $1,667,819 increase or 5.9%. And then we go into revenues, non-property tax revenues, which are other revenues that the Town receives, like excise taxes, aid to education, fees for various services, and things of that nature. We've revised those figures to be $7,142,593, which is a reduction from fiscal year '25 of about $123,000 or 1.7%. And with that, we get a total tax needs calculation. And so we would need to raise $5,769,407 to support the municipal budget, which is a reduction of about $672,000 or 10.4%. And with the schools, they would need to raise, if there was no change, they would need to raise $14,312,622, or an increase of $1,422,968, or 11%. And then the county is a total of $1,035,797, which is an increase of $59,862, or 6.1%. That translates to a total need that we would need to raise for taxes to support these operations of $22,606,700, which would be an increase of $810,827, or 3.8%. And again, I want to underscore that that encompasses the proposed school budget that was voted on. No change to that, because I'm not aware of those figures until they vote on those figures. And with that, all those numbers get calculated into a calculator, which form an estimated tax rate. And for fiscal year '26, with the revised budget, the municipal portion of the tax rate would be $2.61, which is a 33-cent reduction in the property tax rate currently, or 11.2%. There's no change to support tax increment financing. If the school budget were the same, it would be a total of $6.48 to support schools, which would be an increase of 60 cents or 10.1%. And then the county budget, which is 47 cents, or a 2-cent increase, which is 5.3%. That would create a total tax rate for the Town of Gray, that only one piece, we have control over here, the municipal portion, to $9.99, which would be an increase of 29 cents or 3%. And so the average homeowner that's assessed, the average home in Gray, which is assessed at $476,000, under the revised budget proposal would pay $4,753.32, which would be an increase of $136.12. And that's, again, support all these budgets, and that's with no information and change to the school budget. As I outlined in my proposal, it would actually be about a $157 reduction for the average homeowner to support just the municipal portion. So then I wanted to address the capital projects that we had talked about as part of the budget. Now that the Capital Reserve Funds were approved and appropriated by the voters, we would be able to access those funds to support the capital requests that departments had made. And those included, I've eliminated the refinancing of the bond. Those included the Stillwater Improvements, which is a recreation area that's being developed in partnership with a developer. About $150,000, and $150,000 or other funds have been set aside in previous years to help slowly build that up, to have those funds. The Public Works Fuel Tanks, we have recently had an inspection that had passed, and so we've decided to defer the replacement of those tanks. We do have some other upcoming testing that's taking place, that if it were to fail, we would have to come back and report the results of that and potentially explore trying to use reserve funds to replace that, or we could put that on hold and utilize fuel resources from other area partners. We have to replace a Public Works hot water heater for an amount of $15,000, which we would use reserve funds for. Public Works trucks, we had originally budgeted those for about $650,000. We had bid those out in anticipation of the budget being passed in June, and the bids recently came back and were able to secure the trucks that we need to support our operation for substantially less, which is about $414,000. So we're grateful for that reduction. We have a transfer station hot water heater that needs to be replaced for an amount of $15,000. New Begin Lights for $12,000. We've continued to fund traffic control efforts to support concerns of residents regarding speeding and traffic violations for $25,000. And then a Facilities and Parks camera to be installed to support the new Facilities and Parks location at the Old Village Fire Station. And the, or the Turnpike Acres Fire Station. So that's a total need to use from the Capital Reserve of only $636,000. We had had one other request that we were able to utilize existing grant funds for. So that's a substantial reduction, and we would be able to use the Capital Reserve Funds that were approved and appropriated by the voters to fund those capital projects. So those are no longer needed to really be included in this proposed budget. So just to wrap up and say, where have we come from? The proposed budget decreases the municipal portion of the tax rate by 15 cents, and now we are reducing it by 33 cents. And we did that with some spending adjustments that I outlined, and that significantly reduced the tax rate from what we had. And so where do we go from here, is the question that I have for the Town Council. And so we could recommend the proposed revised budget warrants that I included in the budget to the voters. We could then conduct an open-floor town meeting that we could take place as soon as either July 22nd, July 29th, or August 12th. We could also schedule future budget workshops that could take place on July 22nd or July 29th to give people an opportunity to digest the budget, and then maybe come back with some feedback on the 22nd, or provide me some feedback now that I can return to the Town Council with revisions on the 22nd. And then other options we have are potential further cuts, which would be employees and benefits or service reductions. And then there's other potential tax rate reduction strategies we can do, which involve the use of fund balance, increased use of fund balance that the Town has. And that's all I have to present, Mr. Chair and Town Councillors. Happy to answer any questions about what I presented and answer those as best I can.
Thank you so much, Mike. I really appreciate it, and I know you and the staff have put in a lot of work. Before I open up to the rest of the councils for questions, I did want to make a few comments. I don't know if you saw me doing some math here. I think it's really important that everyone realizes that out of every $100 in taxes that you pay, $28.70 goes towards the Town. The rest of that's the school budget, all right? So we can make a lot of changes. Well, and what was that?
And the county budget.
And the county budget, yes. So my point being is we can make changes, but we only have so much control over what we can do here. We want to be as efficient as we can without, you know, cutting a lot of services and cutting employees the best that we can, the best that we can do. But you also need to realize that, you know, the significant amount of the tax base really isn't, you know, with what we do here. I did take some notes, and I did, a few things that, you know, Mike has, I've been working with Mike and talking to all the councillors, making some suggestions, and I'll let them speak themselves here in a few minutes. A couple of things that I wanted to point out that I, you know, I think is important for me is that, you know, personally, you know, I do not want the raises to start in September once this is approved. They need to be retro. Nobody should get, miss out on pay because we're taking time to do this. That's not fair to them and their families, and, you know, I would not expect them to be hurt by all of us taking time to look at this. So I would appreciate if we can fix that and make sure that, you know, wherever we come, we land like this, that it gets retroed. I'd also look to look at, you know, on the hourly, do we need to go to the 40 hours? Or can we flex, you know, some of those individuals that are hourly? If we can do that and allow them to, you know, work a flexible schedule, you know, for the hourly employees, I'm fine with that, and, you know, I know it's not a huge difference in the tax base, but, you know, we can work on that as well. The TIF money, I think, I've talked to Mike, I've talked to Ann, I've talked to others. I think there's a lot of misconception of what TIF is and what TIF isn't. And I am going to work with Mike and Denise and kind of do what I call TIF for Dummies, because when I came onto this board, I did not know much about TIFs myself and how they work. I want to find out more, and I'd like the public to know more. The, in the next few weeks, hopefully, we'll be doing that with Kyle's help, and hopefully just put out more information out there for people to understand what TIFs are and why they're important, not just for us, but also, you know, for schools as well. And we'll talk about that in more detail. One of the other big things that I talked a lot about before was borrowing money. Some of the most, the people with the most money Some of the most, the people with the most money, I, I know, were never the smartest people, they weren't the ones that were the most educated, but they were the ones that were really good with money, and they never borrowed money. And I, I know that at times, we have to borrow money, but if we can not borrow, that's my goal, I would love to do. I know that's always not going to be the case. That's something that I think that we can do a better job as, especially where we have the money to do it today. Those are the comments that I wanted to make, and, you know, I'm going to open it up, and, you know, I'll just start all the way to my left and go to my right. Would Councilor, do you have any questions?
I had questions before you brought up the flex schedule. You know, again, is it possible to keep staff at thirty-six hours, but do a flex schedule and still keep the office open on Fridays?
Yeah, that's absolutely something we can explore. It was my understanding that there was a desire to be, for everyone to be working forty hours here at the town office, so we had worked to try to do that, but that is possible. We had had all the employees budgeted last year at thirty-seven and a half hours, because they, they don't come in the second the clock strikes open hours, and they don't leave the second the clock strikes closed hours. A lot of our employees handle cash, and they have to do a cash-out process and deal with any final customers that may be remaining in the building, so it takes them time to transition. So we budgeted for that extra time to avoid any additional costs or over expenditures in the budget. So it was an increase from thirty-seven and a half to forty, which was two and a half hours. We can make that reduction. It'll be, as the Chair mentioned, it'll be a small reduction, because there's only a handful of hourly employees that work the full thirty-six hours. But that is something we can definitely do, and we can craft a schedule where, you know, folks can work alternating Fridays and alternating schedules to be able to accommodate our ability to serve the citizens on Fridays, which ultimately, I think, is the desire of the town council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Councilor Gass?
I, I just wanted to express my disappointment that we're not going to be able to offer employees the main PERS option. To be clear, that saves four thousand dollars in this year's budget, in the twenty-six budget. I mean, it just seems like much to do about nothing. I, I mean, I, I, I've talked with Michael about this, and, and we've agreed that it's, you know, we can revisit this during the course of the year, and, and try to run some projections about what costs, how that might change costs over time. Like, if more employees decide to take it, obviously, that adds cost in that category, but it's hard to know. And so I, I think, I mean, we spent, we did spend a fair amount of time talking about this in, in the, in the last year. It, it, my perspective on this is that Maine is the oldest state in the country. We're not getting any younger here. Looks like all the federal, the firing federal employees aren't flocking to Maine to take up all the vacant jobs. So it's hard in the municipal area to find people to fill these positions. And we've, you know, I just, one example is, last time we filled the town manager position, we, we found two people that we thought we could, you know, that we would consider. And that's, you know, we were, I'm grateful that, that we were able to end up with Michael, and, and, and think we made a good choice, but it just, it's, it's hard to find employees. And so if we can offer a benefit that makes Gray a more attractive choice over another town, then I'd like to do that. And, and I just wanted to point out that towns, towns, rural towns and school districts all over Maine offer their employees Maine PERS. One nearby is Raymond, which is, I don't know if you know Raymond, but they're known to not be very, they're known to be very tight with the dollar, let's just say that. And, and, but, you know, towns like Orland, Oxford, Otisfield, Lisbon, Mechanic Falls, Paris, Poland, a whole host of school districts and, and entities use the Maine PERS. So I'm just going to, I, I, I'll accept the decision to, you know, pass it over for this year, but that's one area that I was, I was really sad to lose. And I'll, I'll just also point out that, you know, the, the Maine PERS folks had to do a fair amount of legwork to get ready to implement in the new fiscal year, Gray's involvement, and now we basically told them, "Sorry, wasted your time." You can only do that so many times to partners, and then they get pissed, you know, they just don't, you, you get seen as not a trusted partner any longer. And I, we've done a lot over the last seven or eight years to try to sort of repair Gray's reputation and, and be seen, you know, as a more reliable partner, when we put our, you know, put our word behind what we say, and really commit to that. And so I, I regret that we've had to say, you know, at the last minute, "No" to Maine PERS, and, and, and hope that we can make a different decision. I don't have any other cuts or, or questions, and that was kind of a diatribe, sorry.
Oh, you're good, no. And I, I, I'm going to discuss Maine PERS, but I'll wait until the council meeting when we talk about it, but I appreciate your comments. Councilor, Farnington?
The twenty-six budget that we have right here, I have the complete budget line by line in my house, and printed out is about thirty-five pages. So it's going to take a little longer for us to go through it line by line, to see what else can be pulled out. I know Mike did a great job pulling out what he thinks he can. I don't know if we can pull any more out, and we probably won't be voting yes on it today to pass it, but I think we will be probably on the next meeting. We just need time to go through line by line to see what's going, if there's anything huge in there, if that can be addressed, and if not, I think in what he proposed, we'll be fine. As for the hours, I know there's some resentment about open on Friday. We don't really know if that's going to work or not. We're going to play it by ear, but it will be open forty hours a week. I did look up other towns, I kind of like Wyndham's hours. And it's not, it's just to have people come in and be able to serve them better. My stepson's pretty excited about the town being open on Friday, because he works four tens. So he doesn't have any time to come in and do his business, other than on Friday. So I think that's going to be something that we'll play by ear and adjust to it as we go. If nobody shows up on Fridays, we'll make changes and go from there.
Anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Oh, thank you. And Councilor Plangy?
Hey, so kind of to piggyback a little bit on what Ken said with regards to the forty hours, I don't know if anything's really set in concrete yet, but I mean, the reality is, the taxpayers of the residents are the customers of the town, and we really need to be open as much to take care of them as possible. They are the taxpayers, they are the ones who are funding everyone's job. So I don't know exactly what it's going to be, but I think we can all just breathe easy, see where it goes, make adjustments. We'd love to get input from you folks on it as well as we go. Mike, where'd you go? I got a question just for you, real quick. After the vehicles and such is paid for the law enforcement, what is the actual cost each year roughly for the law enforcement officer?
For the additional one?
Yeah, what's the, I'm sorry, yeah.
Hold on, let me hold on. I had outlined it in the... So, in the previous warrant that the residents voted on, the annual cost for next year to support that would be approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
All right, cool. All right, perfect. Thank you. Next question for...
And that would be in the, not the fiscal year budget we're working on, the following fiscal year.
Yes, yes. So regarding the bond that failed, do you remember, and we talked about it a little bit, do you remember what the actual interest rate was?
The actual interest rate was going to be three point three nine five percent over ten years.
No, but the, the current, I'm sorry, I...
Oh, the current one?
The current one, it's six something?
Yeah, it's about, it's approximately six percent. It's not quite a bond, it's essentially a loan from Andrus Coggin Savings Bank, so it has some different terms than a bond does. But yeah, it's about six percent interest rate, and it was for a term of about five years. And the annual payment, it was four or five years, exactly. The, the first annual payment took place in this budget, and it was about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and there was five equal payments.
Okay, perfect.
It was structured a lot differently than bonds are, as bonds usually decline over time. The other bonds that we have, that's how they go.
Perfect. So just so people know, at least I'm speaking for myself where I stand, I am, I am not a fan of debt. And when I look at something like this, and I look at a bond that we're paying six percent on, and our investments in CDs and, and safe investments are maybe three, nine, three and a half, four percent, to me, where we have this extra amount in the general fund, I would be a fan of looking to take money like this, and we'll be talking more about it, to try to pay some of this debt down. And by doing so, you're going to save, next year and the following year, you know, fifty, hundred, whatever it may be, thousand dollars. So just so you understand, I'm not a fan of debt. I'm going to use this town's money like it's my money and be a good steward of your money. You know, one of the things that I ran on was, I want the people to have a voice and be able to, to talk and understand what's going on, and, you know, I gave people my word that I would do it, and, and I'm going to stick to that. Regarding the budget information you went over, I thank you very much, it was, it was really good, it helps, but you've got three people who are new, and I'm not saying that that's good or bad, but we just need, as Ken said, a little bit more time to get our arms around it. You've been great about being open to us to come in, I think we want to do that a little bit more. And once we feel comfortable with it, then we'll look to make adjustments or we'll look to move forward. But before I write my name on something and say yes to the townspeople that, "This is what I want to do," and everybody else, we just need that reassurance to feel comfortable that we're making the right decisions for, for the taxpayers. And I do want to make one comment on the PERS. I'm definitely open to looking at it again, but the reality is, I will never sign something that there is no guarantee that there is not a cap. And what I mean by that is, every year, the purse can get adjusted, and if for some reason, down the line in a decade from now, the market goes bad and there's a shortfall, the town has to make up that shortfall. So until we can reconcile that and all be on the same page, those are things that I don't really stand behind, just because I am looking out for, for the taxpayers. And so that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Mike, then I have a quick follow-up.
Sure, I just wanted to mention, if, if the council supports the action that we proposed for the next town council meeting, we could spend the next year having some one-on-one meetings with the folks from the Maine PERS to get a more in-depth understanding. The, the, the potential obligation that you, example you made for the future, isn't actually what would happen. It's the, it's the, the fund's responsibility to develop actuaries that, that appropriately ensure that they're covered, and there is a, a cap for the potential employer share. So we, we could talk about those in more detail and learn a little bit more about it, but I think I'm okay with us stopping it for now and revisiting it in, in potentially the next budget, when we can have more time to tackle it. But I did want to mention, one of the reasons that we had originally proposed, and Councilor Gass referred to us talking about Maine PERS for a year or so, was that we had had a number of open positions before we, one, switched to the four-day work week, and two, when we offered, when we didn't have Maine PERS. We had a number of qualified people interested in coming to work with us in the Town of Gray that were experienced in other positions. But once they found out that we didn't offer Maine PERS, they withdrew from the process because it was something that, they had invested so much time and resources in, in their career thus far, and they didn't want to lose the opportunity to be able to continue to invest in that program by coming to work here. So that was one of the reasons that I ultimately proposed it. And as Councilor Gass mentioned, almost every municipality around us, I, I don't know of another municipality that doesn't offer Maine PERS anywhere around us. So we, we're in the minority, and so we were just trying, as the previous town council had tasked me, with trying to stabilize the workforce and ensure that we had good quality employees, I proposed those changes to be able to support those efforts.
Do you feel we have good quality employees now?
We do. We may lose some of them based on some of the...
How many salary positions do we have open right now?
We don't have any.
Okay.
I'm just going to jump in here real quick. So I appreciate that, Mike, and, you know, and I just want to say from my standpoint is that, you know, my wife's on Maine PERS. I, I believe in Maine PERS. So I'm not against Maine PERS either. I would like to find out more information, and I know, you know, Mike and Vince have been talking, I'd also like to be involved in those. There's going to be positives and negatives about it, you know? We just, it's not the four thousand dollars this year, in my opinion, because if it works and it's good, then a lot more of our employees should be involved in it, but then they're not going to be involved in the other program. So it, it's going to balance out, but we need to know what those numbers are so we can project what it will actually be. And, and it's not about this year and next year, it's five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. And, you know, most likely, I, I, I want Maine PERS, but I, I have to know those numbers before I feel more comfortable as well. Mike, when it comes to the, the budget workshop, I think it makes a lot of sense now that we just schedule one for the twenty-second, okay? I think that should give most people, from my conversations, I've had a chance to reach out to everybody, you know, twenty times over the last twenty-four hours. So I, I think that, does everybody feel comfortable with, you know, at least coming back on the twenty-second? Will that give us enough time to get in there, look at it, you know, make some recommendations? And, you know, if there's an opportunity to save, we'll suggest it. If not, we'll go through it one last time. Does that work for you guys to look at it again on the twenty-second?
Yes, it's fine.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Doesn't work for me.
Okay, all right, so, yeah.
Could I maybe solicit some...
Yeah, it doesn't work for me.
Oh, the twenty-second, doesn't work for you?
No, it doesn't. I could do the twenty-ninth.
All right.
What about the twenty-first? Is it the twenty-second itself, or...
Yeah, it's the twenty-second itself, that's problematic.
Or the, or the twenty-third, or something else that week?
Any, yeah, anything else that week I could make work, just not the twenty-second.
We can certainly do a different day, that's inconsistent with our meeting schedule, or we can do the twenty-ninth, if people need more time. That might give people more time to meet with me to get some information. I did want to ask if I could maybe get some specific guidance on some of the things that were mentioned, that I could take back. So is there a desire for me to roll back the budget from, that I proposed of increasing the hours for hourly employees to forty hours, back to the, the thirty-seven and a half that I had budgeted? Or does the council want me to keep it at the forty hours that I had budgeted?
I think I, I prefer the thirty-seven and a half. I don't think it's going to make a big difference, but I, but I also want to keep them with what they're used to, and, you know, I, I think if we can manage the flexibility, because what we're really talking about, the, the staff that, you know, are up front, I mean, everyone else is already working forty hours, you know, it's just being here on Fridays is what, you know, what, what we're looking for. And we're also looking, you know, I mean, everyone needs to be flexible, you know? We get that. Just the expectation is, is that, you know, we want, you know, we want people to be available on those days, is, is what we're looking for.
Okay.
And, and that, that's the big thing, I think, from talking to everybody, okay? You know, so I think that, that's what it is.
So if there's no objections, then I'll make that adjustment and bring those figures for the next meeting. And then does everyone agree with the three percent COLA effect of July first, retroactive to July first versus the September first? I had just built that into the budget to get to the, the reductions that we had, so that will result in an increase.
Yeah, I can't speak for everybody else, but I'm not going to penalize anybody.
Can you maybe take a straw poll?
Yeah, let's do a straw poll.
Yeah, are you okay with it?
I'm okay with it being retroactive to July first.
You too.
That's fine.
I'd say any increase, any increases that we do to certain salaries, I would be okay with that.
Okay. And then the, the proposal that Councilor Plangy talked about, about potentially using some of our undesignedated fund balance to pay off the debt that we're able to pay off, which the only ones that are eligible are the, the penal septic project bond that we had, and then we have the Gateway property across the street, which has two payments left on it, and payments left. I, I ran some quick numbers on it. It would save us about a total of sixty-six thousand dollars in interest that we would not pay anymore, and it would be about a three hundred thousand dollar reduction in the operating budget. And then I do, because we'd have less cash on hand, I do have to make some adjustments in our investment strategy, so we would lose about forty thousand dollars in annual revenue in that, but it, it would be a wash in one year of savings, and then going forward, that would keep us within our fund balance policy, based on the projections that I, that I had outlined in the budget.
Would that still keep us over like the three-twelve still?
Yeah, yeah, I would, we would end up, I, I met with our finance staff as we tried to finalize a fiscal year twenty-four audit, as we're working on the fiscal year twenty-four audit, and we'll have a significant contribution to fund balance in fiscal year twenty-four. And we're wrapping up fiscal year twenty-five, and it doesn't look like we'll have to utilize the budgeted use of fund balance of one million dollars. So we're still going to be excessive, significantly excessive in our fund balance, so if we pay, if we use it to pay off this strategy, that will require us to add another, a question, an article question to the warrants, which essentially could replace Article fourteen, it's a revised proposal, instead of refinance, we're paying off, so I could craft... So I could craft the question, the language for that question. And then that would increase the tax rate reduction, I think, from 33 cents to about 43 cents or so. So it would, it would increase. And it would give us kind of a stable budget for the future to build from. So if that's a strategy that people are okay with, then I can pursue crafting that up and bring the revised numbers as part of our next workshop on either the 29th, if we do the 29th.
Okay, and that would be also paying off those, buying those vehicles out of that?
Yeah, the vehicles would be purchased out of the capital reserve funds, which were voted on and appropriated. So once they're voted on and appropriated, the town has the ability to use it for eligible capital expenses. So we wouldn't have to borrow money for those, and we wouldn't have to finance it.
Did you have another something?
I was just going to say that I'm definitely available the 21st to do another budget discussion if everything else is available.
Is there no one objected to the proposal of debt reduction strategy?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Having that guidance helps to be able to go back and sharpen the numbers.
Perfect, appreciate that.
Absolutely. Does anybody have anything else? No? Mike, thank you so much. I really appreciate this. I know it's a lot of work to get this done.
My pleasure.
You know, I think we're pretty close. Let's just look at this and make sure that everyone feels comfortable. You know, as, I think, all these guys, I want to do the best job that they can. So I appreciate it. And I think we can adjourn the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
That's in the regular meeting.
We don't have a public comment on these, do we, Mike?
If you, if you want to allow it, you're allowed to.
Okay, I didn't know that.
We have time, so...
We have time, yeah. So, you know, so if we want to have a public comment before anybody gets up, you know, I do want to make a few statements. You know, I asked that anybody that gets up and makes any comments, and I'm going to read something actually at the full meeting. I, we need to make them positive in the sense that I do not want anybody talking about anybody on the board or any employees. That's not what we can do. It's not professional. And if you have any questions or concerns about any employees, staff members, or board members, then please reach out to Michael. And if you don't feel you got somewhere with Michael, you're more than welcome to reach out to me or anybody else. But I've spent a lot of time researching the rules, calling a lot of other towns. And I don't want to be like I've seen on YouTube and all over the place where we're talking about individuals, people's salaries, people's issues. That's not what we're here for. I would love for everyone to get up and make a comment. We give three minutes. If you feel that we need to go over three minutes, then, you know, I may give you a little extra time. But we'd like to get everybody in. We do have another meeting at 7 o'clock. I'd like to be on schedule for that. But, you know, I do want to keep this on a positive note. And I would appreciate, you know, everyone adhering to that. And I got a much better speech at 7 than I'm going to get, but, you know. So if anybody would like to get up, please state your name.
Go ahead, Frank.
Go ahead, Frank.
My name is Fran Monroe. And I'm here to talk about Article 6, which is the TIF account. And first of all, I want to state that my remarks are not a reflection of the current council or the town manager. Neither were around when the TIF district was created for the village. The village TIF was created seven years ago basically to create a new tax, to create new tax dollars, retain and create jobs, improve public facilities and programs, and save money by sheltering new tax growth dollars. At that time, it was expected to generate approximately $182,000 per year of new property tax dollars, as stated on Page 2 in the TIF document. To date, we have averaged about $123,000. That is approximately $59,000 short per year, or $413,000 to date. On Pages 4 and 5 of the TIF document, is listed the public facilities and program improvements in the amount of $5.5 million, approximately. That is under consideration to be paid with TIF dollars. The document also states that the development program cost will be paid only from the tax increment on increased assessed values in the district, and also stated on, as stated on Page 4. This is a very brief background information to bring me to the main point I want to make. The program is behind. Development is not happening at the pace originally expected. What is also interesting in the TIF new projection sheet is that the improvements would not begin, be able to be done until the year '29 of the TIF. That's when we'll have the $5 million to pay for these improvements. Not unless the taxpayers will pay for it, for them through their general fund. So on Page 7 of the document, it very clearly states the town will not incur any indebtedness at this time in connection with the development program. Why then do we have a warrant article in the amount of $253,000, asking the taxpayers for money to support the TIF shortness? In my opinion, the manager wants to expand the cost of the TIF before he has the money to pay for it. TIPS are not supposed to be a burden on the taxpayers. When the manager created the economic department, the taxpayers were told that the TIF will pay for it. Well, if you look at the numbers, he does not have enough money and therefore cannot afford to expand the department. Listed in the budget, the cost of the department is $345,000, up from last year's spending of $81,000, which could afford in the TIF. The revenue expected is about $123,000. The taxpayers were right to turn down the town's manager's request. So what the council needs to do, because I don't think it's legal to remove the warrant article, needs to come back for a vote, I recommend that the council either uses $0 or $1. If he spends money to rebrand our community, pay for Christmas tree lights, et cetera, the fund will be in a negative position. And that is not legal.
Hey, Fran, you're quite a bit over there.
I got one sentence, I got one paragraph. This warrant article was just bailout for something we don't need or the newly hired staff should be doing that work. And by the way, when we see the report that does tell us how, when will we see a report that tells us how many jobs, business startups, expansions have happened in the last seven years? Very little, because we would not be short. I would also recommend, eliminate the whole economic development department as well. That's that newly formed department I'm talking about.
Thank you, Fran. I do have to be respectful.
And just my last sentence is that there are 10 staff members working with that department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Would anybody else like to get up and speak this evening?
No, Mike, you're rolling your eyes. It's okay. Judy Semino, Gray. I just want to talk about the main PERS for just a minute. And really what the main PERS is, is, you know, I know, Ian, that you're upset because we don't have main PERS because you think we can't attract new people. We don't have any new positions open now anyway. So we still fill them without the main PERS. So it is a caveat, of course, but I'm not against main PERS. So what I want you to realize is it's not $4,000. It's far from $4,000. It's $80,000 for the public safety department. $80,000 is what we're paying for the main PERS. So for us to think it's $4,000 increase in our budget is far from that. That would be one person that makes $100,000 a year, that's putting in 6% in the 457 plan, doesn't put their 6% in, they go to main PERS. That's $4,000. That's one person, $4,000. It is not an annual amount. That is not correct. It can't be. If we were going to increase our budget by $4,000 for main PERS, of course it would be easy to do. It's far from that. It's $80,000 for public safety. In 457 plan, the retirement plan that they currently have, if they're contributing that up to 10% right now, it would be a wash. But who in the world, not every employee in this, in the town is working and making a contribution to the 457 plan of 10%? It's just not possible. That's the contribution for the town to contribute to the main PERS program. So if employee's putting in 5%, then the town has to put the other 5% in to get up to that 10%. So it's far greater than a 4% in one year. It's far more than that. So I don't know how you came up with a 4, and there's just no way. I've looked at all the numbers, and there's just no way that there's $4,000. So, so that's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dan McGuire, 70 Johnson Road. Couple of things I want to compliment you on the discussion around the debt service. I mean, whether you're paying the principal down, whether you're refinancing, whether we're using undesignated funds. I think everyone would agree that we should take the least expensive route, whatever that turns out to be. It sounds like you've got the beginnings of a good plan. So that's definitely been a plus that's come from these proceedings. As far as benefits are concerned, whether it's main PERS or another process, whether it's pay or any other benefits, once upon a time, we had a basket of towns that we routinely benchmarked ourselves against. And you're going to have to figure out what the variables are that you want to track. It's not just going to be population. It's just not going to necessarily be worth of the town. But whatever those attributes are, I would encourage you to take the time to come to some agreement on what that basket of communities is. Some of you have done your own homework and have called various towns and gotten information. And I, you know, commend you for taking the time to do that. But ultimately, in order to have an apples-to-apples conversation, we as a community kind of have to come to some consensus about what's in that basket and who we're actually comparing ourselves to. And once you have that, it makes it much easier to have a conversation because we can all be sort of looking at the same thing. Until then, it's like the seven blind men and the elephant, with everybody hanging on to a different part of the elephant thinking they know what the elephant is. So I would encourage you to spend some time doing that, too. And then as far as the civility piece is concerned, I don't have a social media presence, so I can't speak to that piece of it. But I think generally speaking, all the meetings I've been to, people have been civil. And the only advice I have, from my own personal experience, is anybody can express their opinion. But if you want people to do what you think should be done, then you have to use words that influence people. Because that's the only way that you get the votes. That's the only way that you build some consensus. And that's the only way that we move things forward. And I think as a community, over the years, over the last few years, we've done a really good job of moving ourselves forward. And we've started to look at the future. We've started to solve some of the infrastructure problems that we've had. I think we have some really positive momentum. And I look forward to this council continuing that effort that councils before you started. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Okay, yeah. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to take a five-minute break. I left my phone in the car. Some people, like me, are older and need to run to the men's room. And then we'll get started. Thank you. All right, well said. All right. Thank you. Thank you all for attending the regular town council meeting Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Our location, if anybody wonders, is at 24 Main Street, Gray Main, and we are in the town counselor chambers. If you need to join the meeting and you don't have the link, but you can hear us, if you want to try it, the Microsoft Team Link is online. The phone number is 469-708-0487, and the meeting ID is 831-522-66-POUND. This meeting will be held in person and online with the link I just told you where it was. Residents wishing to participate in public comment or public hearing portion of the agenda may do so by clicking in, clicking in to participate or call in using the phone number I just provided that is also listed online. We are going to start with the roll call. Since I started to my left last time, I'll start to the right. Counselor Farrington.
Present.
Counselor Palangi.
Present.
Counselor Gas.
Present.
And Counselor Klinger.
Present.
And Mike Johnson, Chair, I am here as well. All right. So let's start off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So first, I want to thank everyone here. We've got quite a few people in the audience. Mike, do we have anybody online tonight?
No.
No one online? Okay, all right. And thank you to everybody on the web watching. First, we're going to start with the approval of the minutes from the June 17, 2025, regular town council meeting. And remind me, Mr. Foley, do we need to open it up first, or do we?
If you have no objections, you can let the minute stand as presented.
All right. Are there any objections, or can I let the minute stand as presented?
No objections.
No objections? Okay. And then we will pass those and let those stand. Counsel Communications, I'll start from the chair, and then we'll go around the room. You know, before I begin tonight, my formal report, I did want to sincerely thank my fellow board members for electing me as Chair. I recognize the weight of this responsibility and appreciate your confidence in me. While I'm still relatively new to the town council and having only served for just one year, I bring leadership experience from other roles, including serving as the President of my Fraternity Alumni Association for over 10 years and President of my Road Association for too many years to remember. I believe strongly in being open, honest, and fair, and I know I won't get everything right. I ask for your patience. I've been married for 27 years, and, you know, I ask for patience every day. If you see areas where I can improve, I welcome respectful feedback and constructive conversations. Every town conducts its council meetings as I found a bit differently, especially regarding the town manager's role during those meetings. There's been some discussion about where the town manager should sit and when it's appropriate for them to speak. I've reached out to many managers and counselors in the local area, and I have asked Mike to sit beside me. At first, Mike had decided not to, and we discussed a few times, and Counselor Gas helped me as well. Mike is going to sit beside me for now. I am new to this role. I do not have the experience at this point in time, and he has agreed to help me. If anyone has any issues with my decision, you're welcome to reach out to me directly. Any counselor, of course, at any time is welcome to ask Michael questions or seek his advice, his guidance, or any improvement that they feel they need as part of the process. Over the past few weeks, I've been reviewing our town charter, policies, and procedures, as well as those surrounding communities. As mentioned previously, I've spoken with officials from other towns and reviewed their public documents to better understand how we can approve our operations. For anyone wishing to reach out to me directly, my email address is mjohnson@graymaine.org, and my cell phone is 207-712-6387. I noticed that there is contact information that was missing from the town website, and I will be working with Mike and the staff to get that fixed. And I also sent myself an email from the towncouncil@graymaine.org email, and it bounced back at me. And I have not had the opportunity to work with the staff, but we will be working to get that fixed, and we will monitor those on an ongoing basis. I ask for your understanding and respect for my time. I have a full-time job. I have a family. I have three children, and, as I mentioned earlier, a very patient wife. I commit to responding to emails and messages within 48 hours. I often will reply sooner. That is the service level that I can realistically commit to at this point in time. When reaching out, I do appreciate when residents come with as many facts as possible. It helps me respond more quickly and effectively. I also encourage people to think about the potential solutions when raising an issue. While not every problem has a clear fix, coming up with ideas helps us work together and more productively. I have been managing people for years, and the boards that I've managed, and one of the things that I ask everybody is, please come to me with a solution. Don't just come to me with a problem, because I probably already know what the problem is. I just have not thought of the solution myself, and I would appreciate the help. As far as correspondence goes, I heard from Judy Simino regarding budgets, suggestions, questions about the Finance Committee and upcoming openings. I received a call from Fran Monroe regarding the TIFs, the tax reimbursement financing, and I've also had communication from the School Board and the Town in New Gloucester about setting up monthly meetings. Upcoming meetings, we've got a Planning Board meeting July 10th at 7:00 p.m., and we've got a Staff Review Committee July 14th at 3:30 p.m. And I just want to again, thank you for the opportunity to be the Chair. I look forward to working with everybody and building a stronger and responsive local government. And that's all I have to report. I will start to my left. Counselor Klinger, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Counselor Gas.
Yeah. Open Space Committee, I had my dates mixed up at the last meeting. They actually met while I was on vacation, so I missed that meeting, but they meet a week from tomorrow. Resiliency, at our June meeting, committee members wrapped up their work on the surface water protection ordinance, and the next step, I guess, is going to have to go to the ordinance review committee. So we'll try to make sure that, because so much work has already gone into the ordinance, we'll try to make sure that Resiliency Committee members are present at that meeting to provide that background. We're tentatively planning to have a Resiliency Committee presentation to the council at our August 5th meeting, and this would include a brief history of the Resiliency Committee, when it was created, and the work that went into preparing to apply for grant funding to fund the work that it's doing now. And the bulk of the presentation, though, would be a presentation on the watershed management plan that we've hired the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District to do. So that'll be at August 5th, and with the Surface Water Protection Ordinance coming to the council once ordinance review is done with it, or ordinance advisory. And a resident reached out to me with a request to have a sign posted on her road warning motorists to drive slowly because of children playing in the neighborhood. I connected her to our Public Works Director, and he confirmed that it's a town-owned road and has ordered signs, because he was out of those particular signs, and he'll get them installed. So that was a nice, a nice prompt solution. That's it for me.
That was a good guy. All right. Counselor Farrington.
Yeah, I had Sue Foley reach out to me before I came to this meeting. She had concerns about how many people that we have in the Finance Committee now because of the person who was arrested for stealing money from the town. She said, now we've gone kind of overkill in that department. So that's something that she wanted looked into. And when I do tow calls and drop vehicles off to garages, people are complaining about their personal property taxes. They're really upset about it. So that's something that they wanted looked into.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Palangi?
The only thing I've got on the agenda is, I'm looking on 7:15. There's a tentative meeting to discuss the surface water protection ordinance.
Excellent. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. And so next, we're going to move over to Town Manager Foley for his report.
Sure. I have a brief report that I wanted to share. Let me just share my screen. So I just wanted to remind everybody about table talk with the town manager. We had done that for a number of months at Two Moms on Main Street, and we'll be moving that beginning August 6th at 8:30 a.m. for a morning session at Local Centric. They have a new cafe located in that store, and we're excited to be able to feature that new location and give an opportunity for people to come in and chat with me and ask various questions or get, address concerns or things of that nature that they may have for the town. I know before Counselor Farrington joined, he came to one of them, and we had some great conversation, and hoping to be able to do that with many residents in the months ahead. And we'll try this location in this timeframe for a bit, and then maybe we'll try to do an evening location in an evening timeframe in the future. I did want to welcome our new library director, Andrea Kazlionez, I think I said it right that time, close enough, who's joining us. For time's sake, I'll just spare reading the whole introduction. But Andrea is an outstanding employee that previously worked here as our Youth Services Director. And if you look at the comments from when she rejoined on some of our Facebook pages and things of that nature, the community was so excited, and she and the staff have received tons of exciting feedback about Andrea rejoining us after Josh Tiffany. Thankfully, we were able to have a small transition time where Andrea was able to work with our previous director, Josh, and so we're so excited to have her. And operations at the library have not skipped a beat, and it's a very well-run operation that I don't need to worry about as the manager. So I'm very glad to have Andrea here to support us in that. And Andrea's in the back of the room. If you want to just wave to say hi.
Can we have her come up?
Yeah, if you'd like. Yeah, if you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself to the community, Andrea.
Hello. Again, just thank you so much for the warm welcome. Thank you to the community members. I know so many of you. I've seen so many of you at the library. And the fact that I can take what Josh Tiffany had sort of built, this really, really impressive library for a town of this size, and continue on with that tradition is just so heartwarming to me. So I'm so happy to be back, and please reach out to me with questions at any time, and I just look forward to serving the community.
Thank you very much. And, you know, hopefully you've got the, you know, the same selection of vinyl that Josh has. I mean, he has some of the best selections, you know, so hopefully we keep that rolling, because, you know, Josh obviously has done a wonderful job, and we're excited to have you. I'm a huge, I love the library. If anybody hasn't had an opportunity to go in and visit the library, it's one of the best things about this town. You know, they've done a great job over the years. It's a place where anybody can go. It's very welcoming, and there's a lot more than just books there. There's a lot of services. Can you just take a couple of seconds just to plug a couple of things that you do?
I would be happy to do that. So I would be remiss in my duties taking over after Josh Tiffany if I didn't continue in our tradition of exemplary audiovisual materials. We don't just have books. We have vinyl. We have CDs. We have video games. We have Blu-rays and DVDs and TV series for people who are just not up on all of the streaming services that are available. Again, for a town of this size to have the incredible collection that we do is quite a victory. So in addition to offering all of our physical resources, we've got an online library. We've got the cloud library. We've got the digital main library, which provides research tools, great access to database for students in the community. We work with a ton of homeschool families as well, so we provide, you know, if you, you know, don't necessarily go to the public schools, the public library becomes your school library. But we have a great relationship with the school system, and many of the school librarians have cards at our library, so the kids can check out books from us that might be waitlisted in the school system. We offer great programs, so please come to one of our storytimes if you know any littles, Thursday and Friday morning. Thursday and Friday mornings at 10:30. Our new Head of Youth Services, Brendan Barnes, has an incredible summer reading program lined up. We have almost 200 kids registered right now and we just hit July 1st. So that's huge. I believe he had 182 attendees at his programs throughout the month of June. So again, a massive triumph to provide those services, especially the early literacy programs for our youngest community members. But we're going to start up some of the programs that Josh had run for adults as well. So we've started up our Movie Tuesdays. We've got a 4K projector and a giant screen in our basement. We offer movies free of charge. Snacks are provided free of cost from the Great Public Library Association. And I'm looking forward to offering some more tech help because that's a real need is getting that digital literacy for adults, getting those needs met in the community as well. So please get a library card. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. We're so happy to have you back. And then I just want to quickly give a plug. Both since our last meeting, our Planning Director, Douglas Webster, retired and we had a retirement gathering right here in this room that our Employee Recognition Committee did an outstanding job of organizing to give Doug a great send-off. And it was a tremendous gathering. We saw a lot of old employees and folks who came in to recognize Doug for his many years of service. And as I mentioned when we announced his retirement, one of the things that we, the community, shall always remember Doug for is this incredible facility that we're sitting in right now. Without Doug's leadership and the redevelopment of this facility, we would not have this today. So he left his mark on Gray with this facility amongst many other areas. But we're excited to be able to have this facility and use him to connect it to forever. So thank you for that and that's all I had to report today, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Town Manager Foley. So next, we're going to keep moving along because it's a beautiful night and we are going to open up the public comments of non-agenda items. There is a limit of three minutes per person. I've asked Town Manager Foley to run a clock for me. The public's invited to address the council on any item business that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's a note here for citizens. Citizens have the right and are encouraged to speak during public comment regarding items not on the agenda or regarding an item at the time in which it does appear on the agenda. All comments and questions during the public comment or on the agenda are limited to not more than three minutes per speaker except that the Chair may grant an additional three minutes at their discretion. Any person who has already addressed the council during a public comment on an agenda item or during a public hearing will be asked to wait until all others have spoken before being recognized a second time. Additional comments are welcome at the second public comments period of the agenda call. I had one other thing I wanted to add and I'll only do this tonight. We do, and this is what I alluded to if anybody was here earlier or watching earlier. I just wanted to write this up. We do really want as much public comment as we can and we do value that. Your voices do help shape and make it a much stronger community. And the more we hear from residents, the better we can serve you. With that said, I just want to take a moment to outline a few important guidelines regarding public comment during our meetings. Civility is essential. We ask that all comments directed to the board members remain respectful. And likewise, board members are expected to speak to each other with respect and to the community with respect. I also feel the need to mention that I'm disappointed in the past election that someone felt it was appropriate to give negative information about a member running for office. I will never support this. It goes against everything I believe in. I cannot control what happens outside meetings, but I feel that I need to mention it and I want this community to heal and to move on. Personal matters cannot be discussed at public meetings. This includes comments about individual employees or board members. This also includes discussing individual salaries. If you have concerns of this nature, we kindly ask that you contact the Town Manager, Michael Foley, by phone or by email. Also, we know that we cannot discuss any outcomes regarding any staff. The most we can do is that we have received your information and that we will consider it. If at any time you feel your voice is not being heard, you are welcome to reach out directly to me as a board chair or any individual member of the board. Please note that the board will not respond individually to each comment during these meetings. However, if clarification is needed, the Chair, a board member, or the Town Manager may respond, but this will be the exception rather than the rule. Thank you for understanding and, you know, we're committed to the engagement in our community and we look forward to hearing from each and every one of you. Thank you. Now with all of that said, is there anybody that dares get up? No, just kidding. Is there anybody that'd like to get up?
Hi, I'm Inga Connors. I live at 130 Blueberry Lane. I'm speaking to the Town Council as a resident. I just had a few notes that I wanted to bring out. I do love my town. I also love my job. And being able to work for the town that you live in is a special thing to me. But sometimes it feels like it's the town versus employees. And I see a lot of negative comments online, but also here in person at the podium from other residents. And I have to say that it does hurt morale around here and it doesn't need to be that way. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank you for your notes about positivity, civility, and respect. And to the council, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
As you can see, I'm empty-handed and having no notes. And the reason for it is because I have been spoken about this issue many times before, well, a few times before, and I was assured that the problem has been solved. What happened was, I sent an email to the Town Council through where it says click here on the page. And in the past, you got this like a form-type thing. Well, that has changed. So I thought there was an improvement. And what happens now, when you click, you get an email form, you know, a regular email like Microsoft. So I went and typed away what I wanted the council to know. And then I sent it and none of you got it. Well, I assume nobody got it. I appreciate Councilor Palangi, sorry, H. Looking into the matter for me, but we still have the same problem we had before. And this has gone for like a couple of years, three years maybe, even more than that. It wasn't just me that's affected, it's other people too. Obviously, who don't even know, they think you're being ignored. I don't know what the problem is. I just, with all the money we put in tech, I don't understand why we can't get this situation resolved. What I wrote to you, and I'm going to ad lib because it's up in someplace in outer space. I did have an experience with a group home issue and I had to call the sheriff. And so I wanted you to realize that it's different when you're not impacted than when you are impacted. I don't think I've ever been that concerned before in all over 50 years I've lived here. And so I wanted the council to understand that this is something that really needs to be addressed. There's an impact on the whole community, not just me. And people need to feel safe in their homes. They need to be able to feel safe to go out and do their duties and not be intimidated and that type of thing. This particular person that was on my property is known to the show's department evidently. And he said he knew me, but I don't know who he was. And so we need to start addressing this as soon as possible. I know that there's, I've been told personally by the Town Manager, there's nothing you can do. And of course, I don't take that for an answer. I think that the council needs to look at whether or not these homes are under state jurisdiction or under town jurisdiction. If it's under town jurisdiction, you have to start making up some ordinances, contacting the, you know, companies and all that type of thing. I want to stress how important that is. That's the reason why I came up here tonight. I wish I had, I voted much better than what I said.
I got it. Thank you. No, I appreciate your time. No, and Fran, all I'm asking is for, that I mentioned earlier, is that I don't want to talk about anybody individually. So you can, I will make sure you get my email address. But if you have a problem with Mike, then just send me an email, okay? And I'm just saying that to everybody.
I didn't say I had a problem with Mike. You misunderstood me.
Okay, no problem, Fran, thank you. No, but I understand both your points and I appreciate them. And yes, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rick Light from 35 Fran Circle. And I wasn't going to speak tonight. I was at the, I just wanted to mention too about IT. I'm not sure if it was me, but I tried to get on the workshop from remotely and I wasn't sure if I, it didn't appear that I was getting through. So I drove to my car and had to come down here. But it might have been just me, but just it may be something to check into. Anyway, I wanted to first of all thank, welcome the new council and also thank this council for the work they've done and the hard work that's probably going to happen this summer in a hot, you know, in a hot summer when you'd rather be doing something else. So I want to thank you all for what you do and hopefully it'd be nice to think that we can get through this and the school budget all with one new vote and have consensus in a very positive way. So here's to a short summer for purposes of going through the budget. I just wanted to say, I bumped into Denise in the hallway and realized, I said, I know that face from somewhere. We got talking and realized that, and I just want to put a shout-out to Denise. I hadn't met her and didn't realize she was the new Economic Development Director. And I have experience with TIFs in my professional life. A lot of, I've done a lot of, you know, worked with larger TIFs and I want to talk about that in a second in my three minutes. But I just wanted to say, I bumped into Denise and she was, we got talking and she was very instrumental in helping us get a very large, very, very successful TIF down in the town of Arundel. And you can check with the Town of Arundel Manager Keith Treffethen down there about that particular one. But anyway, so good to have her on board. Hopefully she can bring some of that experience to here. I know that I have not met you, the new manager, but I intend to, now that I know about the table talk, I tend to go to that. If I can get that on my schedule, I've been trying to set up a meeting and talk to you. And anyway, but with regards to TIFs, I just want to make a comment. I guess I need to kind of look more in detail at the Village TIF and the EnterCon TIF, which I know is phasing out. But I just wanted to say that with TIFs, and I work with a lot of developers and a lot of people that bring investment money to projects. And until the town, there's actually some substantial improvement in the town and village. This is my opinion, but I'm just passing on and I, you know, what other developers see. To get developers and the people to come in to create the business, we have to invest in the downtown and the village. They have to see it. I know we've had issues with some of the infrastructure underneath, but they've got to see some improvements. And I know that council's done a great job working with the DOT to get a master plan and get the principal plan moving forward. But if there's any way we can get some pieces of that done rather than waiting to five years for the RISE grant, I think that's how you bring investment into a community and that's how you're going to make the TIF profitable. It doesn't happen by itself. People don't just open businesses. They've got to have a reason to. And people like to see a nice, walkable, attractive downtown. And I just say to each of the counselors and, you know, people here, take a look at some of the small towns that you've seen that before didn't, Westbrook, didn't have the ambiance and that you didn't feel that it was somewhere that was very special and they've improved themselves. And I'm not going to mention any particular ones, but think of the ones you've seen. You say, wow, I like going to that village now and there's some great businesses and they're continuing to open. So just think of Gray that way and hopefully we can get there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, Stephanie. Thank you. Anybody else? It's not on the agenda.
All right, Judy Semino.
And I also wanted to say, congratulations to the new Town Council. I'm wicked excited. I can't even tell you. I think it's going to be amazing year and so looking forward to it. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things about the budget. I've looked at it a lot and one of the things I noticed is, is in 2023, we actually had a budget of $8 million. And so $8 million in 2023. There was capital improvements in there, maybe a couple of million in capital improvements. But to actually run the town was $8 million. And so I look at the budget today and the budget today is $13 million without capital improvements. So you're talking about a $5 million increase in just three years. And I just think that is like, I just think there's got to be some way that this budget can be put way down. I just think that maybe, maybe there's a lot of complacency in the departments when they send in their, when they send in their requests for the money. I mean, I look at like the Public Works and the Public Safety, they have the same line items from three years ago. You know, a large paving for $700,000, which comes in at 500. I mean, how many years in a row are they going to budget 700 when it comes in at 500 and have $200,000 left over? I mean, this has kind of been the standard in almost every department and a lot of these line items, I mean, you've got line items that got, you know, $20,000 for this and they don't use it, but that next year, they're still putting 20,000 in there. And there's a lot of that going on in the budget in every department that I see. And I just think it's time to maybe pull in the department heads again on these departments and say, listen, let's go over your budget and let's find out really, what do you really need in these line items? And I also noticed that in 2023, if you pull up the budget for 2023 and you click on something, it actually gives you a dropdown and says, okay. For instance, they had like phone bills and they had like 12 months' worth of phone bills and such-and-such dollar a month and everything was detailed. So you could hit a dropdown button and all the salaries were in detail and even had like increases and they had explanations on everything. I was like, wow, this is like incredible. When did we get away from that? Because I really think that that's needed. When we're looking at a budget today, you can look at these line items and you can go, okay, cell phones, we're paying $20,000 in cellphone bills. I'd like to know whose they are. I'd like to know what department they're coming from. I'd like to know with the breakdown of like, why are we spending $20,000 in uniforms in one department? Well, they're probably pretty well-dressed. I don't know. But I would want to know, why is these expenses so high in just a matter of three years? And I get it, fuel's gone up, some other things have gone up, but you're talking $5 million on an $8 million budget? Doesn't make sense to me. I look back over some things and I think, wow, it just seems like complacency in department heads that they just put these numbers in and there's a lot of money left over. It doesn't even get spent. There's a lot of money left over at the end of the year. And that's how come you've got so much money in the general fund of $7.5 million, $8 million? I think it's time to button things down. I could go back through this budget and I could pull out a lot of money in here. I've already done a lot of the work already. And I think, I think it's time that these department heads sharpen their pencils. Come back in, sit back down, go through this. Do you need $350,000 in hydrants? Really? I mean, probably, maybe you do. Did you want to comment? Can you comment?
Can I comment?
No.
And you know what? That's the other part that's a problem. You know, why can't we have a communication that's open that we can say, you know what, what was that? You know, why is it, what is the answer to that? I mean, I went to the Town of Raymond and watched all their videos. They have a room packed full of their, people come to their town meetings, their folk. This is like amazing that we've got this many people tonight. Do you know what a difference this is? This is like, finally, people are engaged. And I think if we can have communication open back and forth, I can ask a question and he can make an answer.
Judy.
Yep, I'm sorry. Okay, well, thank you guys. I really appreciate all your work, I really do. I know, Mike, you've worked hard on this budget and I want to say thank you. I really do. Okay, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we are going to move on to old business. There's no items for old business. We're going to move on to new business. The first one is Resolve 2526-2, reaffirming the rules for the Town Council meetings and workshops. And I am going to scroll down. Let's see here. I hate my other ones are, if I can touch them, so bear with me. Be resolved that the great Town Council hereby amends the rules for the Town Council meetings and workshops, Section 602.01A2, regular meetings, Section 602.12B5, council duties, and to remove Section 602.12. Excuse me. This will be the first and final reading, June 17th, 2025, amended July 1st, 2025. This will be the first and final reading, June 17, 2025, amended July 1, 2025. And let's see here. I'm just trying to get to what the actual, what page, Mike, the amendment's on here? All right. And it's right here. Okay. So the first one is to we are going to just number five, right?
To the chair's responsibilities.
Okay. So adding to the chair's responsibilities, we so there were some questions about this and I just want to clarify. My point at the last meeting was not to review the warrants. My point was is that it is in here that we needed to review the warrants, but it hasn't been done. So we either need to do it or not do it. So what we added was this language, that the chair will participate in reviewing and signing the biweekly payroll and accounts payable financial warrants and may delegate this to the vice president when unavailable. So if I don't have the opportunity to do it and do it in a timely manner, then I'm going to hand it over to Vince to do that. That was the first section.
We just removed that reference.
Yeah, and we did. We just removed the reference to the all counselors. I have a little thing in my head here, you know, so just let's see. We deluded the paragraph about the all counselors and then the next section we changed was what page? Was that it? That was it? Okay. So I think we just need to have a motion to accept the rules, accept the changes.
Yeah, I'd move to accept the council rules as amended.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
So do we now open it up, Mike? So now we open up for discussion. So I mean, you know, obviously I'm the one that just I wanted to clarify this. I think that was the big thing for me is to clarify we're going to do it or not. And the way it was written, I didn't really like. So I wanted to change that so that it was written so that it gets done. You know, so does, you know, I'll start over here. Counsel Farrington, do you have any questions about this or?
I don't have any questions.
Counsel Palangi?
No, needs to be done.
Counsel Gas.
Yeah, I'll just point out that this we had this in the council rules when we didn't have as many finance staff and I think there was some recognition that there wasn't there weren't the checks and balances. But now we have more finance staff who are trained in this. There's a lot of checks and balances internally and I think it's a duplicate effort really to have the council members involved in this process as well. I think we could back off entirely, but if if the chair and vice chair want to continue on, I'm they're more than welcome to do it.
Thank you. Counsel Klinger?
I think it's important that a couple of individuals on the council do the checks and balances. So I am in agreeance with what has been written.
Great, thanks. And we can just vote on this, right?
Yeah, so you could offer a public comment and then you could vote.
Does anyone, you know, so I guess, you know, we are going to do it, you know, you know, well, I can't say we are going to do it. We're going to vote on whether they're going to do it, but we're going to vote on the change right now. I think there's a general consensus that we're going to do this. Does anybody want to get up and speak about this or can we just have a vote on this?
Hooray, please put it through. We want accountability. Did you read president or did you read vice chair? When you were reading that, you said vice president.
Oh, I don't know, Fran. I'll go back and read it.
It reads vice chair.
Vice chair is what I thought I said. Yeah. Okay. So, okay, I could have said vice president. I don't know, you know? I mean, I think Vinnie needs a promotion. So, you know, do I get a motion to approve the changes? It's already moved? So, okay, so just vote now? So, all right, so Counsel Farrington?
Yes.
Counsel Palangi?
Yes.
Counsel Gas?
Yes.
And Counsel Klinger?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So, all right. Next item is, let's see, appointing Barbara Wood to the library trustees. Be resolved that great town council hereby appoints Barbara Wood as a regular member of the library trustees and with the term expiring on August 31, 2028. First and final reading, July 1, 2025. And let's see, so again, do we do the same thing we did last time, right?
Take a motion.
So, yeah, to take a motion to approve?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, second, Counsel Farrington. All right, so open it up for discussion. You know, is Barbara here? Would you like to speak on her behalf or?
I get to meet Ms. Wood, but I trust that having another community member would fill out our trustees really nicely. We do have that open spot and I'd like to have a full library board.
Okay. I reviewed the application. I see no problems with with it myself. Does anybody here have any questions or comments?
Thanks to Barbara for volunteering.
Absolutely. Counsel Klinger, you have anything?
I don't have any.
Okay. Anybody on this end?
We're good.
All right. You know, and again, the sentiment is, as Counsel Gas said, I really appreciate anybody stepping up. It's one of the things that we need more people to do and it's a great way to get involved in in the community. So with that said, I'm just going to is it, we don't, I'm not going to go to.
Just go to move. Yes.
So, yes, Counsel Gas, yes. Counsel, yes, and Counsel Palangi, yes, and I'm also a yes. And I'll learn how to do this better, but, you know, I'm moving with this. So the next one is appointing Alice Gouge to the open space committee. Be resolved that the great town council hereby appoints Alice. Yep, he saw that. I didn't do anything. My computer went crazy. I think we need to open up the budget to get me a new laptop. I make myself laugh sometimes. So be resolved that the great town council hereby appoints Alice Gouge as the regular member of the open space committee with the term expiring on August 31, 2028. Final first and final reading, July 1, 2025. Do I have a motion?
For, yeah.
To appoint Alice, yes. Yes, so Counsel Klinger and Counsel Gas, second. Okay. Does is she here? Is Alice here? Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I just, I think it's great that both Barbara and Alice are going to do some volunteer and help out, but I just think it's nice if somebody applies for a position that they should at least show up on the night that they get voted on.
I understood and agreed. Counsel Gas?
It's not a requirement, yeah.
It's not a requirement. Did you know the individual?
I understand that. I'm just saying it'd be nice.
Counsel Gas, do you know the individual or?
I do not.
I do not? Okay. And are you fine with with the recommendation? Because.
Yeah, she looks terrific.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, you know, reading through everything. So, you know, you know, I'm fine with it as well. So I'm just going to move to a vote here. You know, I'm going to try something new because I want to try this. There's a way for me to do this with unanimous consent, right?
You could just say all in favor and everyone could raise.
All in favor? All right. unanimous consent? Move on. Thank you. And congratulations, Alice, and we look forward to meeting you. Hopefully, if you're watching this, please come and introduce yourself sometime.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the future, would you like us to tell applicants they need to be here and maybe check their availability? And if they're not, then schedule them for a future meeting?
I would, you know, to Counsel Palangi's point, you know, it's not a requirement. It would be nice if you could mention to them that it would be nice to at least introduce themselves.
Yeah, we do that already.
I mean, I just think that, you know, I know of people, and especially in the summer, it's a little bit harder, but you know, it would be, you know, if we could find out if they can make it, then absolutely, you know? And if not, and they can make it another date, then then we can move it unless we need to move something fairly quickly. Yes. All right, so the big one. Let's move on to rescind Maine Pers consolidated participating local district plan. I'm going to put my reading glasses on here because it's a little bit more. Be order the great town council hereby rescinds the action taken by its legislative body on June 3, 2025 via order hashtag 2425-23. The copies enclosed to change its Maine Pers employees retirement system plan effective August 1, 2025. The town agrees to rescind its order hashtag 2425-23 and the action taken on June 3, 2025 to add coverage under the regular plan AC for its full-time general government employees and full-time appointed officials who regularly work at least 36 hours per week, 52 weeks per year effective August 1, 2025. These employees will remain excluded from participating in the Maine Pers and be the agreements and the amendments with Maine Pers currently in effect. Copies enclosed remain as it is unless and until the town's legislative body takes a certified action to change its plan in accordance with the Maine Pers rules, chapter 803, section 2. First and final reading, July 1, 2025. And do I have a motion?
Sound moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All right, so opening up for discussion. I think for this one, I will open it up for a public comment first and then is there anybody in the public that would like to get up and speak about the Maine Pers? All right, then I'm going to close that and I'm going to go, you know, Mr. Farrington, do you have, you know, any comments?
No, I think we've pretty much covered this and they have comments and everybody's covered it pretty well already, so I think we can move forward.
Okay. Counsel Palangi?
I feel the same.
Counsel Klinger?
I feel the same.
All right, and Counsel Gas?
Yeah, ready, move.
Okay, and I am just going to make one last statement. I do hope we really look into this and I'm not against it. I want to be very clear about that. It's a really good tool. I need some more numbers. I'm a numbers guy. And, you know, I really hope that if it makes sense for recruitment and for the and for the town, that we spend the amount of time that is deserved to look at a program like this. I think that there's a lot of innuendos and a lot of information out there. We don't have all the details that we need right now. And, you know, I know for a fact Counsel Palangi will be a pit bull when he gets the numbers and, you know, and will know what the numbers are. And I think, you know, we need to look at that, look at not just what the numbers are, but also, you know, how it's going to affect the town. I think that that all needs to be considered. I appreciate, you know, the amount of time that, you know, Maine Pers has put into this. I think that it's a really good program and I don't want it to just end today, but I think for today, it makes sense to do this with what we're doing. So I'm just going to go to a vote on on accepting the the order to rescind. I'll start on my left. Counsel Klinger?
Yes.
Counsel Gas?
Yes.
Counsel Farrington?
Yes.
And Counsel Palangi?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right, I'm over. All right, so order number 2425-23, is this? So, Mike, I just clarifying.
That's just a backup.
That's just a backup? Okay, okay, okay. So, so we're done, right?
So item 11, which is the next public comment.
All right, so, yeah, moving on to to the last section, public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to stand up this evening to make any more public comments? All right, and let's see. I think that's it, right?
And then there's no council referrals.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I don't have, okay. Yeah, I used to get printouts for this. I got to talk about this because I, yeah, yeah, go back to that. So, you know, there are no, let's see, I'm going to go back to that. Hold on, because I like my paper. I apologize. Let me go to this. Sorry. All right, so there's no referrals. There is the current council referrals, including below is a list of items exclusively referred to the town council for workshop review. These items are included on the agenda for reference only, which are the comp plan and the rezoning piece of it, to create the water quality, shore and land ordinance, the pop-up business ordinance, to update the public safety ordinance, and the village transportation project. The upcoming meetings that we have, the town council workshop, August 5, 2025, I'm going to stop right there. There will be another meeting. We will get that data to the public. But, you know, for the ones that we had scheduled, the council workshop, August 5, 2025, at 5:30, then the council meeting at the same day at 7:00 PM. And then the town council meeting scheduled currently for September 2, 2025, at 7:00. The council retreat at September 16 at 5:00 PM and the council meeting on October 7 at 7:00 PM. And then there is no executive session?
I just actually a point of clarification on the council referrals where it says the second one, create water quality shoreline ordinance. That's what I was referring to when I did the resiliency committee update. It's it's that really should be renamed the surface water protection ordinance. We changed the name of it during the our deliberations, so I just want to have that clarified.
All right, Brett, can we do that? Okay, excellent.
That's what it was originally referred and named, so we could leave it as that or we could we could change it if the council collectively agrees.
Could you maybe just put in parentheses, surface water protection ordinance?
Yes, we'll put we'll add that so people know.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thanks.